Ask everyone to mute their microphones and I'm gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Pappen? Thank you. Councilmember Bonilla has not yet joined the call. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Gouthos?
Here. We have several ways for you to join public comment. It is published on our agenda. You may call 408-638-0968 and enter the conference ID 818-9919-5027 in order to join us and provide public comment. Do we have any public comment at this time, Madam Clerk?
We do have someone on the call and Adam Lorraine, I don't know what item he wants to comment on, he'll raise his hand when it is time. So for a special meeting, we only take a public comment for items on the agenda.
Got it. Moving on to our old business. I'll turn it over to Drew.
I believe Sean's first on the agenda tonight.
Ah.
Is that correct? Yeah.
That's right.
That is correct.
I'll do, I'll do my best. I'll do my best. Sean, what do you want to talk about?
I'm loading up my presentation here. Let me know when you see it.
There it is.
All right. So this evening, we're going to be receiving an update from, from me on the Small Business Eviction Moratorium. And the purpose of tonight's discussion is to obtain direction from the council on whether to prepare an ordinance extending the term of that moratorium. In this presentation, I'll review the history of the city's Small Business Eviction Moratorium and then identify actions taken by other government agencies since that time that may impact the council's decision-making and then open it up for questions. So as you may recall, back in, on March 16th, several actions were taken to the Bay Area. Health officials, county officials issued shelter-in-place orders. The city council declared a local emergency and on the same day, the governor issued orders suspending state laws that might preempt local eviction moratoria until May 31st, 2020. A week later, the city council adopted the Small Business Eviction Moratorium. And on the 30th, the council amended the moratorium ordinance to bring it into line with the governor's actions. So established a May 31st, 2020 expiration date. So our next council meeting that's scheduled for May 18th will be the last opportunity potentially for the council to adopt an ordinance to extend the moratorium, if it desires to do that. So some actions that have been taken by other governmental entities since the council initially established its moratorium was on March 27th, the governor enacted a moratorium on residential evictions. Doesn't cover small businesses. It expires on, also on May 31st. On April 7th, the county enacted a moratorium on small business evictions. But its ordinance only applies to unincorporated county territory. But it also expires on, on May 31st, 2020. I spoke with county council today about if there are any efforts underway to extend that moratorium. And to date, no decision on that has been made by the county. On April 6th, the California Judicial Council, the, the organization that oversees the operations of the courts, suspended the issuance of summons for eviction actions, which is the first step in a, in a civil court process for affecting eviction. They suspended the issuance of summons until the end of the emergency plus 20 days or 20 days after the emergency is lifted.
Did you say 20 days or 90 days?
I'm sorry. I think I said 20. It's 90 days. It is, it is 90 days. And then we, as you know, that the Seminole County Health Official Shelter-in-Place Ordinance was recently, order rather, was recently extended to the end of this month, May 31st. And future actions remain at this time remain uncertain. That concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you, Sean. Future uncertain. That's the two words we like to see.
Yeah.
Thanks. No, I have no questions. Thanks.
Welcome, Rick. Any questions from any other council members?
I have a question.
Eric, go ahead.
Thank you. Sean or Drew, have we got any feedback from any of our small businesses? Just that, like this is actually helping them or this is, this is like meaningful that we're talking about it? Cause I really haven't heard from that many. I've, I've heard from a lot of small businesses worried about a lot of things, but, but this doesn't seem, hasn't fell on my, on, on the radar screen, at least for what they've talked with me about. And I'm just curious, have we, have we gotten any feedback on it, one way or the other?
I have received calls from, I believe, two different, a landlord and a tenant, you know, coming, coming at the issue from two different perspectives. The, the tenant's concern was that because her business was not able to occupy their space, she was not able to generate the income necessary to pay back her rent even after six months, as our ordinance currently provides. And so she was entertaining the idea of approaching the council to extend that six months to a longer period of time for, for payback. I'm not sure if she's made that contact. I haven't seen contact from her in, in that regard to address to the council. But I did hear from, so I heard from one tenant and then recently I heard from a landlord, owner of a, I think she had three or four spaces in, in her, at a building downtown. And, and her concern was about the, the significant impact on her ability to make her mortgage of, of the whole notion of having, of having the, the ordinance in place. But, so those are the only two contacts that I can recall since the ordinance went into effect.
And then if, if I could just add that I know that during the business outreach calls that the Economic Development Group has been doing, it's a limited sample size, but they were making folks aware that this moratorium was in place. And, and the message that they were getting back, that Jennifer and her team were getting back was that landlords were generally working with the tenants to, to find a solution to issues.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
If I, can I give?
Councilmember Pappen, please.
Thank you, sir. So I've had some interactions with some tenants downtown as well. Two tenants and one landlord. The landlord certainly working with people. The one tenant is having difficulty with his landlord and the other tenant is as well. As a matter of fact, on the one, when it became apparent that the tenant wouldn't be able to make their rent, their response was, well, then I'll, I'll impose penalties on you. And well, thank goodness our ordinance had where you couldn't impose penalties. So I've seen different ways and I've been as a council member, I've been as an attorney, so. I know as far as extending it, you know, Drew, you, it's a great point that, or I'm sorry, it was you, Sean. With the six months, it make it difficult because you just kind of keep falling. This is only, it's not a price. So it may get tricky for, but anyway, I know from the anecdotal evidence that I have that it was, certainly has been helpful to, to tenants, commercial tenants.
I would just second that from what I've heard from my, the handful of tenants that I've spoken to. And it doesn't, it doesn't resolve for the compounding costs of rent, but it takes one of the X factors away. Am I going to lose my space?
Yeah, losing access to the space means that you lose access to all of the things inside the space. And some people have very expensive equipment that they wouldn't want to lose access to. And it opens up a whole nother situation. I know that like other council members, I've dealt with several tenants and several landlords. And one, one of the tenants who I spoke to was actually representing the tenant. And that person ended up laid off and the phone number didn't even work anymore as I was trying to work with them. So it's a, it's a quickly evolving situation for, for a lot of people.
And it is true. There are a lot of tenants that do have tenant improvements. Ultimately, they would be entitled to those improvements, but that doesn't mean it's going to be easy in the interim. So I guess the real question is, because this is just a deferral. And you sort of do fall farther behind, but is there some merit to going another 30 days?
I'm, I'm leaning towards yes. Obviously, we're going to hear public comment and Rick has his hand raised. So Councilmember Bonilla, do you have a comment that you want to add?
Thank you. Yes, I am leaning towards yes also. And additionally, I think that we should keep a careful look at extending the period to payback. Because the longer this stretches out, the more there is built up to try to pay. And, and it's difficult for everybody all the way around because I've been hearing from a couple of commercial tenants, really only one residential tenant. The landlords are really unhappy. They're trying to exert every kind of pressure they can. They don't seem to believe what the letter says. It's like, you know, we don't care. So, you know, it's difficult, but I would err on the side of making it possible for our businesses to stay downtown.
I mean, and it depends whether the landlord has debt on the building and what the bank is doing to the landlord too. So if we were to extend it, you know, I, what I would recommend is that, you know, maybe we consider 30 days and then take a look at it again. But I agree with Councilmember Bonilla to also, in conjunction with that, extend the time to repay.
Can I just add, maybe one of the ideas would be looking at differentiating the time to pay by, by the, whether you're considered essential or non-essential, because our non-essential businesses have been closed this entire time. They might need a longer period of time to recover than our, than our essential businesses that have been, you know, that have been scrounging and, you know, in, in, in survival mode, but with their doors able to be open.
I'm open to that. I, I would probably give all businesses the same longer period.
My thinking is that even those that I know who have stayed open have not been doing that great. It's been a struggle. So I would treat them all the same.
If I may, through the mayor?
Yes, of course. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you. And, and I, just to add on, I'm agreeing with, with all, all the comments I've heard. And just if anything, if extending it just kind of spreads out the pain a little bit more too. Because everybody's hurting, but it seems like those on the front lines with the rents due and the customers not coming in, they're the ones that are kind of on the hook now. So I'm also in favor of, of everything that's been proposed.
I, I just want to clarify one thing. Sometimes, sometimes extending the pain over a longer period of time is, is used as a negative, but you're using it as a positive, right?
Yes.
Okay.
What I'm saying, I meant not extend as in time, but spread out.
Understood, understood.
Building, basically landlords are also kind of have skin in the game too.
I, I was pretty sure that I understood. I want to clarify. Okay, good. Let's go to public comment. Is there any public comment? I don't see any hands raised from the attendees. I'll go to the clerk and ask if there is anyone else who has called in who wants to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we have no public comment on this item.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to the count. I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. And Sean, we can, we can act on this now. We can vote and extend it by the 30 days with a longer period? Or do we need to do it on a regular council meeting?
It's, it's not on for adoption tonight, so you're just giving direction. I'll prepare it for the next meeting, next Monday.
Excellent.
And so what I've heard so far, they think unanimity in terms of a 30-day extension. So we expire at the end of June as opposed to May. And then some consideration of an extension of time for payback. And if, if I could provide options in terms of a couple of different options, you can decide that next Monday or if there's clear direction and a consensus on how much longer. Right now, it's six months. Payback after the, I believe it's after the emergency is lifted. And, and if you want to give direction on a precise amount, make it seven, eight, nine, nine months or a year. Either do that now or do that next week.
Any opinions at this time? Go ahead, Councilmember Rodriguez.
I did, I just have a question. Does it have to be all or nothing by a certain amount of time? Or could we say something like after the six months, then maybe can you start making payments on it? Just to try and again, balance it out. So it's not, you're just waiting one lump sum towards the however, but maybe you have to start paying some installments or some, something, half of it after that month or something like that?
Certainly from a legal perspective, you could, you could do that so that after the six months, it's, you get another, another six-month extension or I'm just picking that, throwing that out. And you pay 50% or something like that for the, during that period of time.
Personally, we'd be interested in hearing options like that, just to kind of make it a little bit more of an on-ramp instead of a.
Right.
Sounds good. Okay. Sean, you have all the direction you need?
Sounds like the, the council's kind of, doesn't feel like the need to specify the extension tonight. That I'll give you some options and you can make your selection next week.
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With that, we'll move on to the next agenda item, Old Business Number Two. This is our COVID update from our city manager, Drew.
All right. All right. You able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So this is this week's COVID-19 update. This is our eighth update. Operationally, the current health officer, officer order is still in effect and its order is more restrictive than the current state order. For instance, no, no curbside retail is available in San Mateo County at this point. We're still tracking the county's orders very carefully for its next update, but we're not aware of when that is going to be. Our Emergency Operations Center went virtual as of today. So we're still keeping our twice daily briefings, but we have been able to, to scale back a little bit. But we are available to scale back up again if, if need be. The City Hall reopening task force is continuing its preparations. Pending health officer orders, we are planning for a June 1st soft opening of City Hall. Over the past week, we've had heavy development services activities since the construction ban was lifted. So we had 147 online permits submitted and we had another 329 building inspections conducted, half of which were virtual. Our restaurant reopening support efforts are underway. We sent a survey out to restaurants last Thursday. That, that survey went out to over 300 restaurants in the city. We're forming a task force with restaurateurs, the chamber, DSMA and staff to really dig into the details of what closing streets or, or closing off parking would, would look like in the city to, in order to, to support our restaurants as they prepare to reopen to dine and service. This may require a municipal code amendment related to alcohol in the public right of way. So we're, we're working on that as well. And then finally, our golf course reopened six, very successfully last Wednesday. We had over a thousand rounds from Wednesday to Sunday and that's comparable to where we were last year, which is at the same time. And that's notable because I think all, almost all, if not all of the tee times that were available were taken over that five-day period because we actually had to space the tee times out longer than, than this period last year. So last year, same amount of rounds, but there were more tee times available. So high demand for, for our golf course right now.
And it was limited to locals?
San Mateo County, yes. Redeployment, well, we've still got 18 employees in redeployment. All of them are assigned. Very pleased to report that five employees last week were trained and are now doing census outreach. We've made over a thousand calls to our businesses through May 8th. The initial calls were made and those were focused on our restaurants, our ground floor retailers and personal services. The outreach on childcare continues and we're continuing to, to call businesses and try to make, just speak, speak with them and let them know what's going on as best as possible. Business assistance grants, there were 54 grants available for San Mateo businesses. Forty of them were funded by the city and another 14 were funded by the, the county. For those 54 available grants, there were 289 applications. At this point, I don't know how many of the applications were, were actually eligible. I would presume that not all 289 were actually eligible for the grant. But as you can see, much greater demand for the business assistance grant than there was available grants. We will know the name of the grant awardees in the coming weeks. The Safe Streets Initiatives, the projects in North Central and Central, so Monte Diablo and Fremont, they're moving forward and we're going to be implementing those over the course of this week's. Bay Meadows has been operational for about a week now. We've been continuing to communicate with that neighborhood and additional A-frames were added at, at the intersections. And I'll show an image of that on the next slide. And then in North Shoreview, they were working on some bike safety messaging on the Bay Trail to be extended to all of the Bay Trail within the San Mateo city limits. And here's just some, some images. On the left, you see the, the Safe Streets map for Bay Meadows and some of the additional road closed to through traffic and pedestrian-only signage. And there's also in, in green there, there are some extended segments to the, the Safe Streets. And then on the right-hand side is some of the other promotional material in English and Spanish for the, the work that's going on in North Central and Central. And then finally, there is nothing requiring council confirmation tonight. And I wanted to bring up the consideration of the continuation of the weekly meetings. Next week is a regular meeting. I plan to provide another update at that meeting. The following Monday is the Memorial Day holiday and then Tuesday is the Planning Commission meeting, which would prefer to be, continue to be scheduled on that Tuesday. So I wanted to ask the question as to whether council had interest into transitioning back into the regular meeting schedule as of May 18th for council meetings. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Any council members have questions at this time?
I have my hand raised.
I see a hand raised by Councilmember Bonilla. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So back to the Safe Streets Initiative. I did receive comments from Prometheus, who owns the Metropolitan Apartments on both sides of Fremont Street between Third and Fourth Avenues. And they were concerned about having, you know, how that would work if it did work. And they actually, you know, I actually drive through there almost every day between 101 and my home. And it's kind of a heavily traveled area. I don't know that it would really be safe for pedestrians and kids to be out there on that section between Third and Fourth on Fremont. And so I don't know, what do we do? Do we actually shut the street off someplace like at, you know, the north side of Third or at Second or, or down at, you know, the other side of, south side of Fourth or over at Fifth? How do we provide for safety through that Third and Fourth Avenue corridor there?
I'm going to ask Brad to unmute himself and, and answer that question if he could.
Yeah. The intent isn't really to allow, allow pedestrians like permanently in the street. It's just kind of alert drivers that there could be pedestrians in the street as they kind of avoid others that might be on the sidewalk for six feet. So it's kind of like this temporary movement idea. So it's, it's really more of a warning driver. So we're not intending on closing streets at all. But we're trying to have the pathway available for, for pedestrians and also alert them to bicyclists who may be in the street as well.
Yeah. So I, I, I'm concerned about that. And I know that you're working with North Central. Is that what I read on this issue? Is that, Emo, have you heard anything about that?
Yeah, we've met with some community leaders and I, I thought they had met with the, probably the property manager of the Prometheus project. From what I, I didn't meet with them, but I thought staff had met with them as well. So.
Okay. Well, if nobody else is concerned, it sounds like things are being worked out then. I guess I'm good. Thank you.
I went to Bay Meadows over the weekend. I checked out those areas and walked them and drove them. And mine was the only car there. So it was very, it was very safe. And I felt like there were a lot of people out wearing masks, walking, walking the dog, walking with kids. It was, weather was beautiful. So it was, it was a nice day and it seemed to be working quite well. Other council, Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
I just wanted to add to what you were just saying, Mr. Mayor. I also, this weekend, I, you know, there's always a question if, if streets were safer, like will more people be biking? And I saw more families on the road driving, riding their bikes in downtown than I've ever, than I've, I, I didn't even know there was that many bikes in San Mateo. And they were little kids. I saw this one mother with like four kids behind her, like in, in order of, of age. And there was like little duckies, ducklings following. And they were on Third and, and, and Fifth, I mean, B Street and Fifth. And so I, I really think that there has to be a way that we can kind of take advantage of, of kind of what we're, what we're seeing going on right now. And, and trying to, just as much as we can, extend it for when the, and when the cars come back. Because I think this is a, would be a horrible opportunity to waste here.
If, if we build it, they will come for sure. It's, it's a success and we need to build on it. Councilmember Lee?
Yes, I, I wanted to mention that I, I met with some folks from Bay Meadows. And, and I think that, and I'm not sure exactly when the additional signs went up, if it was before my conversation with them or after. But, but I think that, I think that it makes sense for the Safe Streets Initiative to be very context-specific and very neighborhood-specific. And, and I think there could be some interest from the neighborhood to potentially do a partial closure. Operating in the sort of this gray area where cars are kind of allowed and pedestrians are kind of allowed. It, it, it can be a source of friction and confusion. And I think that there's sort of, there's a gray area of what a Safe Street Initiative and what Safe Streets are and how we define it. And I just, I'm, I, I think that we might need some more conversation there in terms of what really will work for that specific neighborhood and North Central. And as we continue to roll it out, because it's probably not going to be a one-size-fits-all.
Is part of what you're saying, more is better?
More signage is better. Yes.
And, and maybe even more restrictions in terms of closing the streets?
I think if, if the neighborhood supports that and from a circulation perspective, engineering perspective, it works, then, then I think that should, option should be on the table.
Councilmember Pappen, did you want to chime in before we go to public comment?
Well, I think those are big ifs. So we'll have to take a look at them and see what we can do. I think this is a nice test period. And these are extraordinary times right now. As, as we get up and running, they may change a little as to what the needs will be in that neighborhood too, you know? But I agree with Councilmember Rodriguez and Councilmember Lee that, and you, Mayor Gouthos, that these times are somewhat idyllic in a way. And if we could perpetuate certain aspects of them, by God, let's try. But I, I do know that circulation and those kinds of things are, are, are big deals. We hear about it a lot, as you guys know. So if we could just have everything, I'd be fine.
Like, well said. Let's go to public comment and I'll remind folks that you can join the conversation by calling 408-638-0968. Enter the conference ID 818-9919-5027. That is published on the agenda. And right now, we're going to go to public comment and we have a public comment from Adam Lorraine, who has his hand raised. Go ahead, Adam.
Yes. Good evening, Council.
Yes, good evening, council and staff. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Huzzah for Zoom. This is fantastic. So I would like to start by thanking the City Court, Patrice, for everything. In addition with Kohar and our our other staff who have been working to make this possible. This is, this is a great way to stay connected with our city. So I just wanted to indicate my support and thanks to City Manager Drew Corbett and his staff, Public Works and Brad and the council for moving forward quickly on the Safe Streets Initiative. I am, as a North Central resident, very excited to get out and check out the new Safe Streets in North Central. I'd like to extend my thanks to Handsome and to the Central Neighborhood Association for working with staff to figure out a path. And this is a pretty big path. I I got a chance to ride it before the infrastructure went up and I I thought this is a pretty sizable amount. So I'm looking forward to checking it out safely, socially distancing and and allowing people from both neighborhoods to enjoy it. I also just wanted to agree with the comments from Deputy Mayor Rodriguez and Councilmember Lee about this initiative and from the deputy mayor's perspective. Certainly, I I've been out riding a bit too myself and it's it's frankly been the best, most pleasurable experience I've had in this whole period. The weather happens to be fantastic, of course, right now, but indeed also just feeling free and safe all around the city. It's it's a wonderful time to be riding and a great opportunity for people to share in that experience and get a sense of what it might be like when we implement some of what was just approved by council in the Bicycle Master Plan, for example, and and get a sense of of what a difference it could make to to feel safe and and to be able to ride in this opportunity for lower traffic. So very, just thank you for giving this a try. And to Councilmember Lee's point, I agree, you know, there there will be, you know, I imagine it won't be super obvious to everybody exactly what's going on and and it'll just need to be an iterative process, perhaps different in each neighborhood. And as long as we're continuing to gather the feedback and and check in on things and work with our stakeholders, I I'm sure every week it'll get better. So just thank you very much for all you're doing, everyone.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you to you too. Appreciate the public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any other members of the public who would like to comment on this agenda item?
I see no other speakers indicating that they want to comment.
Okay, then we could go back to Adam if you want to talk for, no, just kidding, Adam. I'll bring it back to the council and any final comments? Drew, there's no approval that you need, but you do want to hear back if we want to meet on a weekly basis, especially given Memorial Day.
Correct.
Okay, I think we, I I could forego Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you.
That that Tuesday, there's a Planning Commission meeting. Anybody else have an opinion?
I feel the same way.
As long as my pay is not docked, I'm okay.
We'll pay you double.
Same price.
I'm the same way. We don't need to meet next week.
I saw head nods from Deputy Mayor Rodriguez and and Councilmember Lee as well, is that right?
Yep.
Is it okay with you, Drew? I mean, do you feel like we have a heavy load next week? That it would be a, I mean, a disservice to us in terms of getting through everything that we need to get through?
No, at this point, I think I think we're okay.
Okay.
Staff's not going to complain that we're not having a meeting next Tuesday, two Tuesdays? I don't think so. Drew, you've been doing a great job. Keep bringing it back to us on a regular basis and we'll see how every other week goes.
One, one comment or?
Deputy Mayor, yes.
Thank you. Drew, do you, do you think it would be beneficial to also have some sort of a city task force that's just aimed towards helping our small businesses get back? Get, you know, get back in shape and get and get ready for just basically doing anything we can. I know that you were talking about the restaurant, the restaurant task force. But that that is, I I could easily see that it'd be extended a little bit to just look at other issues that are facing our small businesses. Have you ever considered that or is that true?
Well, I think that that's largely been the effort that that Jennifer and her team have been doing to try to reach out to the businesses to really understand their needs, point them to the, point them in the right direction, point them to the right resources. I think their their needs are are sometimes, sometimes very similar, sometimes very different. And so I think like we'll find when we when we talk with the restaurants and do the task force for the the restaurant reopening support, it it will, we're going to get a lot of different perspectives. They're going to have to figure out how to come to consensus on that. So I guess that's my long way of saying I don't, I I think the calls have really gone a long way to understanding the need and doing what we can to support them. I'm not sure if we need to do a task force at this point.
Great, thank you. That sounds like makes sense.
I did have, through the mayor.
Councilmember Pappen.
I did have, I did have someone reach out to me. And I think, just trying to see who else is on this email, Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, about these third-party food deliveries and the fees that they're charging. And I guess there's been a cap on those fees in San Francisco. And the person was asking if we might want to consider a similar cap. Right now, the the fees can be as high as twenty five to thirty percent that are being charged to the restaurants at the same time that their businesses are down upwards of sixty percent. So I'm just wondering if that's something, maybe I should bring this up at the end, but it seems like this is a a good place. Maybe if there's interest in in taking a look at something like that the next time we meet.
Has anybody in San Mateo County done something in that regard?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm only aware of two cities that have done this, San Francisco and Santa Cruz.
Right.
And I could comment that I saw on the news just last night or the night before that the delivery services said, well, if we can't charge, you know, the restaurants, then we're going to charge the end user, the people we deliver to. Somebody ends up paying somewhere because they say they can't do the service without that amount of money.
Go ahead, Drew.
Well, I was just going to say, I think, just to follow up on that point, I think that would be a couple of concerns. Enforcement would be a challenge. I think I know in one of the models, I believe it's Santa Cruz, that that the enforcement is, is that this, the business goes back to the to the vendor and says, you overcharged us for the delivery. I to, I think Councilmember Benia makes a good point, I, that I believe they're going to take that cost and send it back to the to the consumer. And so that's just a consideration. And then I know in in San Francisco, one of the the issues was is they did, they they stopped delivering to certain areas because they didn't think it could work with the cap. So I think could be some unintended consequences there.
For what it's worth, I'm still interested in having a look at it. I think that we're not San Francisco. Things may be different here, so.
Yeah, I would, I would also be, oh, through the mayor. I would also be in favor of at least looking at it, but I share a lot of Councilmember Benia's concerns. Not necessarily that it would be passed down to consumers, but just like when you start having each city kind of meddling around with with some of the with some of these things, you can end up with a lot of things that that nobody could foresee, so.
So I'm I'm going to put that in the form of a request to to staff and and Drew. If you hear something, see something, whether it's an opportunity or an inability for us to act in this space, could you bring it back back to us at one of the next two meetings and and report back to us? Is that a formal enough request?
Yes.
Okay.
And I I'm fine with that. I I don't want to spend a lot of our resources doing it. But if you folks want to just take a look at it, let's just give it a gander.
Second that.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question? I mean, maybe this is something that that we as a council could express interest in and and raise at one of the county briefing meetings as as a countywide strategy to look at?
I think that would make sense, that it would be a countywide regulation. It would be more functional, I think.
I'm totally fine with that.
Yeah, that that probably works.
Why don't we do this and we'll do that call?
Good idea. Okay, that'll be the plan.
We'll let you know how that goes, Drew.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to close this agenda item, move on to the next agenda item, new business. Fiscal sustainability, agenda item number three, we have a presentation from our finance director, Rich Lee, who is on the call in video and has his presentation queued up sans tuba. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Golds, members of the council. Rich Lee, it's my honor and privilege to serve as the city's finance director. The on before you this evening is the city's first look at the fiscal sustainability plan. So last month, we provided a high-level look at the proposed 2021 budget, which had total resources or projected revenues of one hundred twenty nine million dollars, total requirements or projected expenditures of one hundred thirty six point eight million dollars. This ultimately will generate a deficit of seven point eight million dollars. This deficit will result in a drawdown on unassigned reserves. And in order to address this deficit and ensure that the city remains financially sustainable, staff has developed the fiscal sustainability plan. There are a number of strategies that we have already implemented, some short and some long. Some of the short-term strategies that are already folded into the proposed 2021 budget include freezing vacant non-safety positions that are directly or indirectly funded by the general fund. This strategy provides about three million dollars in relief to the general fund. For 2021 only, the general fund will be relieved of providing additional support for CIP. There are sufficient funds in the CIP fund to make sure that the the CIP projects for 2021 receive adequate funding. In subsequent years of the plan, the general fund will resume its additional funding of CIP. Some of the longer-term strategies that are folded into the proposed budget and the long-term forecasts, first is the additional discretionary payment or ADP. ADP is a sound strategy to address unfunded pension liability only when the city has discretionary resources during periods of economic prosperity and the financial crisis brought upon by the COVID nineteen, where resources have rapidly and significantly evaporated. Allocation of resources to maintain service levels to the extent possible is our focus. And finally, on the long-term strategies, we're also foregoing the housing set aside. This is twenty percent of the property tax increments of the former redevelopment agency. The current balance as of today is four point eight million dollars and this resides as a reserve in the general fund. Even with these short-term and long-term strategies folded into the budget and the long-term plan, absent any additional action from the council, the table before you reflects the five-year forecast for the general fund. There are a few things to bring to the city council's attention. First is that over an eighteen-month period, covering the current fiscal year and the subsequent fiscal year, we will be drawn down upon unassigned reserves by nearly twenty million dollars. The second, also speaking of unassigned reserves, and that really functions as a financial hedge against how the economy will fare and especially in the recovery in comparison to the city's assumptions. So absent any further council action, we would completely exhaust our unassigned reserves by 2024. The third and final I'm to bring to the council's attention is that this five-year forecast does not incorporate any of the additional pension liability or corresponding increase in pension contributions that would begin in fiscal year 2223. For example, if the fiscal year ended today and CalPERS return on investment was zero percent, that would result in approximately a three million dollar increase in additional general fund pension contributions. The fiscal sustainability plan is organized into five types of categories that you see before you. And the subsequent slides will go into a bit more detail on options that the council can consider. The first category is for council consideration is to potentially modify city operations. The overarching goal with this option is that we have minimal or no impact to service levels. In spite of the impact of COVID nineteen, of the COVID nineteen pandemic and the ensuing shelter-in-place order, there actually have been a few benefits to the city's operations. The first is that we've realized efficiencies as a result of new technology that has been implemented to significantly subdue the impact to city operations. Prior to COVID nineteen and the shelter-in-place, closing down nonessential city facilities would have been a service level reduction. With new technology, there has been minimal to no impact to service levels. The second benefit is that we were able to successfully and rapidly position our technology infrastructure to support working from home to such a degree that working from home has been successfully proven to be a viable part of the city's operational framework. As such, a couple of the options for the council to consider are, one, to close nonessential facilities every other Friday or some variation upon that theme. The second is to strategically and permanently eliminate specific frozen positions. Again, with the efficiency gains that we've realized from new technology that has been implemented, all of which would have no impact to employees as employees would be able to work from home with this solution. Additional benefits to this strategy, one would be utility savings. It would be about a hundred thousand dollars in savings in utility costs, namely gas, electric and water. There's also environmental benefits. There would be less employees driving to work, therefore less cars on the road, which would then result in a reduction in greenhouse gases, which is a council priority and under the framing future category. Another category under this plan for the council to consider is under employee compensation. We've organized this under two subcategories. The first are options for the council that would have no impact to service levels. The first of which is our potential salary reductions or freezes. And the savings would be generated because the city's long-term plan assumes salary increases. If we were to forego salary increases for two years, that would equate to about one point six million dollars each year. Another option for the council to take a look at is our employee retiree health savings or deferred compensation in terms of benefits that we provide to our employees. We could also look at revising the cost sharing for either medical or pension contributions. As an example, if we, the city were to shift to an eighty percent, twenty percent employer-employee split for medical premiums, that would provide about one point five billion dollars in relief for the general fund. For pension cost sharing, there obviously is existing pension cost sharing, but for every additional one percent, that would generate about under fifty thousand dollars in general fund relief. The other subcategory within employee compensation are are those that would impact the service level, namely furlough. So furlough for nonessential services, as an example. If we were to close nonessential facilities, the week between Christmas and New Year's, where employees would receive no pay, that would generate about half a million dollars in general fund savings. If you wanted to be a bit more stringent, and this again would be contrasted with the previous example of closing nonessential facilities but having employees work from home. The contrast is, in this example, we would actually not have employees work from home, but they would actually take this as no pay. So that's an option for the council to consider. Obviously, this would generate more substantial savings. But again, all of these would be subject to employee negotiations. The third type of category for the fiscal sustainable sustainability plan is funding support. There are a number of supports mechanisms that the general fund provides. The first and one of the more substantial ones is support for the CIP program. There are two, actually two types of general fund CIP support. The first is two million dollars that goes directly to supporting streets. We could theoretically stop this funding, however, that's not something that we would recommend because that action would ultimately result in deferred maintenance. The second type of general fund CIP support goes toward other CIP. We've historically characterized that as discretionary. And since the Great Recession, the general fund has significantly undercharged the construction services fund. This is the fund that accounts for building permit revenues and planning permit revenues and the supporting service and costs. and the supporting service and costs of which are accounted for in this fund. The general fund has significantly undercharged that fund for administrative support and rent for many years. In recognition of that disparity, the construction services fund has the capacity to fund this $2 million in other CIP support as opposed to the general fund. There's also the OPEB contribution. So OPEB is the other post employment benefits. That's largely reflective of retiree medical benefits. The city does have a trust with CalPERS specifically designed to offset the liability from this benefit. That's about $6.8 million available. And as an option, the city council could forego contributing the full annual required contribution or the ARC and pay retiree health benefits from this trust fund. Each year, we're for the next fiscal year 2021, we're budgeting $1.4 million from the general fund to this trust fund. So that's an option that the council could look at. The third option for the council to consider and under funding support is the contribution to the replacement fund. Essentially, as a part of the city's operating budget, we charge ourselves enough funds to set aside this replacement fund in order to ensure that we replace our equipment in a timely and orderly manner. The replacement fund, it does have the ability to forego contributions from the general fund for a limited duration. This is about $1.2 million per year, but this is not a practice or a strategy that we recommend. It's not sustainable and should only really be reserved for fiscal emergency situations. From a safety and risk mitigation perspective, we want to make sure that our employees have the funding to have reliable equipment that's safe to operate. The fourth category from the plan is to take a no rent strategy for facilities. The primarily, primary lease that the city pays for, the general fund pays for, is the lease for 1900 Farrell, where our public works department largely resides. This strategy wouldn't really immediately help the city. We are looking at this as a part of the master plan prioritization effort. One thing that the COVID-19 pandemic has shown is that we can work from home. But again, this is not a short term solution. Moreover, this would be something where we would have staff possibly rotate desks and cubicles at city hall because we're able to, we've been able to demonstrate that working from home works. However, until there is a known vaccine for the coronavirus, this is not a solution that we can look at in the short term. The last, one of the last categories of the plan is revenue enhancement. Per council direction, we've moved forward with the TOT ballot for measure, for polling. And the second item in this is in general that the city's fees cover the cost of services. However, there are some services that council has conscientiously adopted policies that sets that cost recovery rate at a lower level. The council could consider increasing this cost recovery rate in order to generate enhanced revenues. There are some other items that the council could look at. And the previous examples, when we talked about either working from home, closing non-essential facilities, whether through furlough or working from home, the council could take a more precise look at targeted service level cuts. So this would be specific divisions, specific departments where we would, this would actually result in a potential layoffs. So that's something for consideration. The other item are special events. So there are a number of community events that are held throughout the year that are incorporated as part of the city's operating budget. They, you know, it is a six figure dollar amounts that is part of the budget, but it's not ultimately a strategy that we'd recommend. These are really community events that help build that relationship with our residents and the overall community. There, and it's really in terms of dollar amounts, it's not going to be something that's going to get the job done. So that's something that we're not going to recommend. With that, I'm going to pass the baton on to our city manager with the recommendation.
All right. Thanks, Rich. So for, for phase one of this, which is closing the $7 million structural budget gap, assuming the goal there is to minimize service level impacts, I have four things I'd like to recommend moving forward with. The first is addressing employee compensation. Staffing, staffing costs is 70% of our general fund. And in order to reduce costs while maintaining service levels, the only real effective way you can do that is to really flatten out employee compensation costs. And as Rich had mentioned earlier, you know, one of the good things about doing a long term forecast is that if you assume salary increases that then you don't provide, you generate that savings without, without actually reducing compensation. And so I'm recommending that we, we look to have conversations with the bargaining units. And I'd like to get direction from council tonight to that end. If they're in agreement, that I go start having conversations with the bargaining units about coming to agreement on getting $3 million in compensation concessions in order to close, start to close that $7 million gap. Additionally, I believe we can get $1 million through the strategic elimination of positions. So as, as Rich mentioned earlier, we, we've frozen positions that are funded, frozen vacancies that are funded by the general fund right now to the tune of about $3 million. I believe through efficiencies that we've gained with technology over the past few months that about a million dollars of these positions can be permanently removed from, from our budget with no real impact to services. The third item is, as Rich noted, providing $2 million of annual support for the next five years from, from Fund 26, the construction services fund to cover discretionary capital that was previously funded by the general fund. And then finally, would be the TOT measure. And if that is put on the ballot and passes, that would, that would fill the last bit of the $7 million gap. And then if that is either not, not put on the ballot, or if it's on the ballot and doesn't pass, we look to implement the Christmas to New Year's furlough, and then would need to come up with some additional savings as well at that point. But if we were to take those four actions, we would be able to effectively close the structural budget gap over the next four years with a minimal impact on our service levels. So Rich, can you flip to the next line? So with the recommended options, this is what the general fund five year forecast looks like. I want to point out, as you'll note, on the resources under requirements is that this wouldn't immediately close the gap. This would close the gap over the next four years with fewer and fewer, with less and less drawdown on our unassigned fund balance. Would the unassigned fund balance going down to $21 million by 2024? And again, as Rich mentioned, this is really the phase one aspect of it. This is to stabilize, to, to cut the current structural deficit. Within the next phase being looking at two things. One, what happens with CalPERS, which we have a good idea that that's going to add to our, our cost basis starting in 2223. And then what does recovery look like? So in a, in an absolute best case scenario, we recover very quickly from this. Our revenues start to rise and they're able to either fully offset or partially offset the, the impact of CalPERS. A worst case scenario would be CalPERS increases our costs by three plus million dollars a year, starting, starting to be phased in in 2223, and recovery is not what we expect. And we, we create a new structural gap that we have to close. And I think at that point, we would have to start looking at service level cuts. But we do have some time to, to evaluate that and, and see how recovery looks going forward because we've, you know, we're keeping our unassigned fund balance at a level that allows us to continue to absorb any shocks that, that the economy may have for us over the next 12 to 18 months as we, as we see what recovery looks like. And so with that, that's, that concludes the presentation and Rich and I can take any questions that you have.
Okay. Yes, I'm going to go to council member Pappen first.
Just two, two questions. I'm not sure I quite understand the CIP and how that savings happens. Can you just explain that a little better for me?
Sure. So right now, the general fund supports CIP programs to the tune of over $4 million per year. There's really two categories of CIP. There's CIP support from the general fund that goes directly to streets. So that really goes toward maintaining that PCI level of 75. The second type of CIP support from the general fund goes towards other CIP. As you mentioned, this is the more discretionary support. Over the past couple of years, we've used that for the high voltage street light program. So one option that the council could move forward with is to, in recognition of the, of not charging full freight for the general fund's support of the construction services fund. We could take the funding from construction services fund, and it does have the capacity to do so, and supplant the general fund's support of that other CIP for a period of about five years.
Okay, hold on. How much is in that? Construction services fund right now?
So there's a policy of one, one year of budgeted operations. That's $10 million that's reserved for policy compliance. Total, let me answer your question. There's $40 million. $10 million of that is needed for policy compliance. An additional $10 million is to support the CIP improvements for 2021. That is folded into the 2021 operating budget and CIP. The remainder is available for support of, to supplant the general fund support of other CIP for the next five years.
So that's 10 million, two, two million a year? Is that what you're picking up there? Okay, that's how you got to your two million. And then you, on the OPEB contributions, if you didn't make those, which I, it would be a savings of 1.4 million a year, that would be that?
It, it's, it's a bit of a taking it out of the left pocket and putting it into the right pocket. We're just using assets that we already have. So it's not a position or a strategy that we recommend because it's, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul.
I just want to make sure I understand how it works. And then I, have you taken into account what cost of living increases are expected to be, if any? Is there a way of predicting that, Rich?
There, there is a way. We have the, the CPI increases going back to 1954 or however long they've been tracked. And we looked at the long term historical increases year over year. And that really is consistent with the city's council strategy of what the salary increases have been. So the historical average for the San Francisco Bay area for CPIU is 2%.
So you took an average?
Correct.
And in the Great Recession, I don't, there weren't cost of living increases then, were there?
Can I jump in through the mayor?
No. Diane, do you want to finish your sentence and then we'll let council member lead jump in?
Go ahead. I'm cool.
Well, I just nerded out about this exact question. And so I-
CPI during the Great Recession?
Yeah, I did. And it was for CP, CPIU, that's a consumer during the Great Recession in 2008. It was 0.7.
Okay.
For, yeah, and for the urban wage earners and clerical workers, it got down to 0.6. That's all.
Okay. Thank you for that contribution. And, and council member Pappen, does that help you formulate your question?
No, I appreciate the information. Let me just see. Hold on. I just want to make sure. Most of my questions really related to the mechanics of what was being offered to us as options. So I just want to make sure that I fully understand each one.
You said you had two questions and I don't think you've gotten to the second one yet, so go ahead.
Yeah, the second one was, was the cost of living. I'm good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member Pappen. Moving on, I don't see any hands. Would any, Eric, Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, please?
Thank you. Drew, do you know when these two of your recommendations would, would come out? And, and the reason I ask is because although we don't know the future, we, but we do know it's probably going to be bad.
Yeah, I think that if, if council were to provide direction on the recommendations tonight, we would look to start implementing those and talking with the bargaining units. And then unless something dramatic happened unexpectedly with, with our financial environment, we would look to come back to council in October with the, the closing of, of the 1920 fiscal year. How did that turn out? How are our revenues looking? And I think that would be the start of, of talking about phase two. It might not, we might not come to decision on phase two at that point. But that's really the next time that we would, we would come to council with another major fiscal update to, to really see where are we and, and what, what does the future look like, given another five, six months worth of information?
Okay. And, and one other thing, I know that we, we talked about during our one on one. Do you think there will ever be kind of an analysis on, I know that we have a, a pretty strong commitment to keep service levels as they are, but you know, not all service levels are, not all services is created equal. And I, and I definitely believe that there are probably some things over the years have gotten up to maybe a little bit higher than they need be right now. And maybe if they disappeared tomorrow, no one would even notice. So kind of those, but there's also some things that if you tweak a little bit, you know, we're going to get 100 emails. But not looking at those, the other, the other things that are just kind of, that are just there, that have just kind of come out of the prosperity we've had in the last eight years or so.
What do you mean there? Library hours? What, what kind of stuff?
Trimming the hedges four days a week instead of, or two days a week instead of four days a week. Street sweeping, things like that. Anything. I mean, I'm not, I'm not here to make the recommendations on what I think they are. What I'm asking our city manager is if he's looked at that and is there anything that, I guess, has it been, we're not going to look at services at all? Or have you been thinking about like where, where we might need to be going towards October?
So I will say that the, the current effort has been a focus on maintaining services. And so the actions that were taken are really heavily focused on maintaining services. I think if, if council wants to provide that direction to start looking at potentially targeted service cuts as part of the phase two, which, which may be necessary, we can certainly start doing that. There are, I, I would, I would say there's two types of service cuts. There's, there's one type, which I think council member or deputy mayor, you, you brought up, which is a, a real direct and tangible service cut of instead of doing something three days a week, we do it one day a week, right? And, and that's pretty easy to quantify what that looks like in terms of staffing and overall service level. The one, the one that's more difficult, and I'll use the city attorney's office as an example, is, is their work is their work. And, and the, and what you do when you cut services there is if, if, and so for example, Sean's got an attorney that's, that's leaving. And so he's going to be temporarily three attorneys instead of four. Well, the work is not going to go away. We can't just say, you know, well, we just won't file these claims or whatnot. But what happens is, is then you start expanding the time significantly that you're able to respond to things. So something you could usually do in a week now takes two. So it's a, it's a different type of, of service level reduction. And so that's, that's a consideration. But again, if the, the focus, the focus so far has been, what can we do to maintain service levels? But certainly if council wants to look as, to start us looking at service level reductions in, in targeted places to, to bring back for the, the phase two discussion, we can certainly do that.
Council member Lee.
Just to build off of that, that question, for me, I think at this point, it's so hard to talk about maintaining service levels when we have no idea what, what a normal service level will even be in, in post COVID, you know, phase two, phase three, phase four. And, and so for, for me, it's really hard to, to use maintain service level as a, you know, as a, as a goal, as an overarching goal, even though I think like as philosophically, of course, we want to maintain sort of high quality services and have continuity of services. But, but without, with, without knowing how, how our reopening will, will actually go. How, like, how are we factoring in the reopening and the phased reopening and, and the potential decline in utilization of our services, like key services, like our libraries and our, our parks? Like key services, like our libraries and our, our parks and rec? And, you know, and what are the sort of assumed cost and cost recovery components to, to those, to those things? Are those, are those variables that are, that are factored in?
I think that the, the short-term strategies, so the short-term strategies get us through basically the next fourteen months. And so through that time, there hopefully will be some, some clarity about what, what normal looks like. Starting in twenty one, twenty two. So current, current assumptions about the maintenance of service level assumes that, that by the time we get to the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year, we will be back to a, a much more normal state of usage of our facilities, usage of, of our libraries, so overall service demand. So that is, that is the working assumption for, for fourteen months from now. We don't know the answer. And I think part of that, as, as, as we move forward, we will be better able to define if, if we think that assumption's a good assumption or not, not a good assumption. And that would then kind of drive some of the decisions that we made on service levels. But for the, for the long-term, the, the assumptions do, do factor in a resumption of services at the level, at the pre-COVID nineteen level.
Okay. Council member Benia, did you have questions?
You have to unmute.
Thank you. So I want to thank you. Yes, mayor, I do have first a comment and then some questions. I, I want to just kind of reiterate what councilwoman Lee mentioned, which is that we're in a limbo right now. Nobody knows how long this is going to last, how deep it's going to get. So many unknowns, I think more than variables, they're just flat unknowns that it's really hard to figure out how to compensate for. I'm in favor, when I think about it, of those least painful remedies that we can think of right now for the short term. Everybody knows that during extended periods of economic downturn, there are major shifts. Rents go down, home prices go down. And, and construction tends to slow down. And so the economy, it, it, while it's already taken a beating, it starts taking even more of a beating as a result of what's happening. It's like it punishes itself. So I, I, I'm in favor of, this is what I brought up at the South Bayside Waste Management Authority over the last month because we did furlough some workers there because the workload shifted. And I mean, I don't know whether we, our employees qualify for this, but the state has a program called WorkShare whereby everybody can have some kind of an hour cut to a certain level, between ten and sixty percent of hours are cut. But unemployment seeks to make up that difference, the state unemployment office. And so it's a great tool for employers like Recology and South Bay Recycling to use. I don't know if, see, the thing is, the, the employer registers with EDD to get that program going. And we have-
And I, yeah. Rick, can I ask you to hold that thought for just a second? Council member Pappin, was your hand raised for this topic? Did you want to comment on what Rick's saying right now? Do you want to wait till after Rick's done? Yes. Sorry, okay. If you wanted to jump in because it was on that topic, I was going to have you do it now. Go ahead, Rick, finish the thought, sorry about that.
So, so that's where I'm at, you know, and, and of course, you know, cutting services ultimately, it's, it's just another way of saying cutting employees. And, and for me, that's like pulling my implants out. It's really bad. I realize sometimes it becomes a fiscal reality and we have to get there. But I'm in favor of the other measures, like every other Friday closed holiday furloughs for two weeks. All those kind of things that I think we can do fairly painlessly.
Nobody wants to cut out your implants.
Yeah, well, it feels like it to me, okay? So, but that said, you know, I, I'm in favor of holding back the two million dollar CIP contribution. I'm in favor of the options that were presented to the extent that they're not actual service cuts, except there are short-term furloughs. And that's kind of where I stand right now.
Thank you, Rick. I haven't gone to public comment yet, but Diane, let's go to you.
I just had one more thing that I was going to say. And that is whatever decisions we make, I think as a council, we can keep in the back of our mind that this is a fluid situation. And that, let's say there's some relief that comes into municipalities. Maybe then when we make these decisions, we also set priorities. Should we get some additional revenue? We know right off the bat where we want to apply that revenue. Because some of these things I know, to echo council member Benia, are, are difficult and not particularly palatable. But we're realistic here. But I would like to see us set priorities should things change, because they are rather fluid, so that people know that we're going to, if money, additional monies come in, we're going to try to remedy some of what we have to do now.
Definitely.
That was all I had to say.
Thank you, council member Pappin. Council member Lee, do you have more to add before we go to public comment?
I had a question. So in, in the bucket of revenue enhancement, we, you know, we had talked about the TOT in moving forward with our polling. And in a previous meeting, we, we had nixed the idea of the billboards. And I was wondering, you know, when, when we're talking about, you know, when we're talking about a seven point eight million dollar shortfall, is this something that we should bring back? I mean, that, that, is there, is there a, like, what is the barrier to us revisiting and putting all of the revenue or like at least some of the prioritized revenue enhancement options back on the table to factor in before we, we start making, you know, serious cuts?
So we didn't, we didn't nix the, the, the billboards. We just delayed it just due to staff capacity, so we are planning on bringing that back.
Oh, good. Okay. So that's, so bringing it back, meaning that that is factored into the budget, can, the budget forecast? No?
No, no.
Okay, would it, would it change the picture here?
It would, it depends, I don't know how much money it would, it would bring in. But it would, I, I don't think it would. I, I don't know how much it would bring in, so I don't know how, how much it would change the picture. But I don't, I don't, I don't foresee that being the, the panacea.
Yeah. Okay, but that is going to be, come to us before and be factored into before we finalize this budget or no?
No.
Okay. Can, what is the timeline then?
So we, we moved it out of this fiscal year. So when you say this budget, I believe the staff is talking, thinking about for year, fiscal year twenty twenty one. And we had, or the council direction already was given to move this out of consideration before the end of that fiscal year. So moving into the next fiscal year.
Okay.
So we're, we'll probably looking, looking at that around late summer, early fall, have a conversation about that of, of this year, of this calendar year. So pass the date that the next budget will be done, but in time for, you know, the following budget, if, if it's available as a revenue raising measure.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Any other questions before we go to public comment? I don't see any, so I'm going to go to public comment at this time. I don't see any hands raised in terms of the public attendees. I'll ask the clerk, I take that back. Now I see a hand, so. Madam Clerk, I'll go to you in a, in a moment, but for now, I'm going to ask Adam Lorraine for his public comment. Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and council and staff. I appreciate the presentation. And I just wanted to say as a resident, I am amazed that despite a seven to eight million dollar perceived shortfall coming up in the next fourteen months, that what's being proposed does not result in a cut to service necessarily and doesn't result in potential employee furloughs. I think that's obviously a, a compliment to the management of our city finances and to this point and, and to keep reserves for emergency situations. So I'm, I'm very pleased and proud and just personally would support the idea of a TOT ballot measure to fill that last million dollar gap and hopefully avoid a holiday furlough of employees or other service cuts that would be potentially more deleterious. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam, tell your friends to vote for it, I appreciate it. Madam Clerk, do we have other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I do not see anyone else.
Okay, great. I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for more questions and comments. If I may, I have a couple of comments for Drew. One of the things you mentioned, Drew, and do you mind bringing up the presentation again, that last slide? Or is it, is it that I'm viewing it in a way where I don't see it? Rich, can you put it up for us again? Is this the last one?
Yes, this is the last slide.
Can, can you go back to the four-pronged approach? There we go, perfect. So what I, what I see is that in terms of the shortfall of the budget, seventy percent of our money goes to staff. And what we've seen is that every private company in America is cutting staff in order to cut their budgets. Every day we hear about layoffs. But that's not in this plan, we're not cutting staff, we're not laying people off. In fact, I don't know the number, forty percent? Forty percent of this comes from reducing future raises that, that we were planning on giving, that will not, that we, if we can negotiate with staff to not give raises during this time, that we will consider that to be three million dollars in savings, which accounts for about forty percent of the solution here. Am I doing that math right?
That's correct.
And assuming that you can negotiate with staff, and that is an assumption at this point, it would not be cutting, cutting jobs, it would not be cutting service levels. And the employees would be asked just to pick up forty percent of this solution. But that, but that would need to be with their agreement to this. And you have not, as of yet, negotiated this with staff, is that right?
That's correct.
You didn't bring us a plan that cut seventy percent of salaries to begin with. You, you brought it in at, at this level, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and if this, moving forward, if we do see greater cuts needed, we would also have the opportunity to revisit some of the revenue measures that we're not currently capable of bringing forward. So the tiered transfer tax was something that we had talked about in the past?
Yes.
I'm going to start calling that TTT, is that going to confuse everybody? The tiered transfer tax was something that if we needed to, that we can, we can try to get that on a, on a ballot either. It, it, it's starting to feel like it's too late for this year, so twenty twenty two is, is the near, is the soonest we could do that if, if we needed to, is that right?
Yes.
Without it being a special election, which would be expensive, but.
Right. So there was one other thing, oh, so the, one other thing that we brought, talked about in the past. Measure S is, is our sales tax, and the sales tax is currently a quarter cent for thirty years and then sunsets. Another option would be to, to bring up the sales tax again and to either make it a half cent or to take away the sunset. Taking away the sunset doesn't help us right now at all, does it?
No.
And, and I think that it's a sensitive time to be talking about adding to the sales tax because it's, it's regressive. It would, it would hurt people who, who don't make as much money. And it, and it, it's an especially tough time to be hitting sales tax with small businesses hurting as much as they are. Is that why you're not bringing that forward at this time?
That's correct.
I would submit that some would say that about the TOT tax too. But let's see where the polling goes with it, I think, at this moment.
I, I would completely agree with that, council member Pappin. I think, I think people are less concerned about whether it's progressive or regressive when you're talking about taxing people who don't live in the county. So we'll see. Those are the only questions that I had at this point, which was more about the equity of bringing this forward, trying not to hurt jobs, trying not to hurt the current employees. And I wanted to commend you, Drew, for doing that. But the alternative, if we, if we can't get employees to agree to this, then we really are talking about eliminating positions and, and talking about staffing levels and, and and service levels. So I, maybe that's just me opening up the conversation to the other council members, but I, I'm in support of, of this plan moving forward. I think that it requires everybody in the city to, to join in and share equitably in, in the sacrifices. And, and it is a sacrifice, but I think that this is the right plan moving forward.
I'm, I'm hopeful, I, I would concur. I'm, I'm hopeful that, well, you know, the phrase comes to mind, we're all in this together.
Yep.
And never more true when it comes to dealing with balancing our budget and taking a look at employee salaries. But I, like you, Mr. Mayor, do not want to see services cut, and I don't want to see employees be cut. So this is certainly the lesser of certain evils, no question about it. I, I'm hopeful, the reason why I asked the questions about the cost of living increases is because if the, if the bargaining units are willing to take a look at these increases, I'm hopeful that in the real world, they're not confronted with those cost of living increases. So isn't, it isn't felt particularly strongly. So let's, let's see where we go with this. But I would concur that this reflects something about us all being in this together. And we're each going to have to do our part.
Any other council members want to chime in? Yes, council member, Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, I saw your hand first.
Yeah, I'll just chime in. I think our staff has done a fantastic job with these recommendations and fully support them. I, I think that these, even though these are going to be hard for a lot of, a, a lot of people, our city as a whole, I think that, that these are the relatively easy ones, as council member Benia was saying. And I, and I do think that, I, I do think for, when we're coming up to phase two, we, we need to make the easy cut, the easy sacrifices that we can, but we need to be prepared to do more. We, we just can't be caught flat-footed when it comes to, to October because we need to have, I think we need to have all options on the table. But for now, I think that this is a, a great plan, I support it, thank you.
Thank you, and council member Lee? Lee and Benia, Lee first, go ahead.
Hi. So, um, so when I'm looking at, you know, freezing salaries for two years and then also looking at the data that shows cost of living increases, even if it's, you know, at a point six level and knowing how, how challenging it is for, for people to live here and work here. It's, you know, I don't think, you know, this is, these are, this is the, this is not an, an easy decision. this is not an an easy decision at all. It's the best of of some really hard decisions if we're, if it's in comparison to to taking a pay cut, which, you know, I've been, I've been putting an ear to the ground and talking to as many other council members in neighboring cities as I could get ahold of. And many of may, many of the folks that I'm talking to are are asking their employees to take, you know, 20% pay cuts. And and others are even talking about cutting services. And so, you know, relative to those options, you know, this is probably the best one. But, you know, I I don't think it's an easy one. And for me, like, there's this part of me that wants to, you know, going back to what Mayor Golds was saying and thinking about equity and that and how to, how to apply an equitable lens to to the discussions around compensation. Some of the things that I've seen in other places is looking at and factoring in negotiations that potentially do allow for some some level of increase to to positions that are not being, that are not at median. So if you're not at median, and then then potentially there are there are ways to slice the pie in 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 other ways. And so I just want to put it out there that it would, that using a precision tool is something that I I think, you know, if it's available to us, that we should be considering. And and many of our employees are at median, which is great in many classifications. So that's, that's a good thing. I, you know, going back to what what Councilmember Pappan was saying about this being very fluid and and reiterating that we don't, I don't think that we can assume that we are going to resume to full service levels. And so for me, having that be a baked in part of the the working assumption and analysis is 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 questionable. So I just, you know, that that going forward, I think that that just means we need to continually be reviewing this. And that, you know, I I think we're set to do it on a quarterly basis. And I think that's, that's great. And and then lastly, I would just say that if we can get to the billboards, if we can get to the TTT faster, if there are, if there are trade offs that that we should make in terms of how, if there's an opportunity to speed up that timeline, get things on a 2020 schedule or get it, get it fast tracked so that we can factor it into the budget sooner, then maybe that's something that we should be thinking about. I I don't want to leave anything on the table. And and maybe we do need to reshuffle priorities because because in addition to the health crisis, we're looking at a financial crisis. And so I just, I just don't want to hold us back from from those decisions about potential revenue enhancement opportunities. Those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Benia.
Yes, thank you. So I I do like the four part plan that we were shown on the slide. I see benefits with taking that path. I know that, sitting here and looking at the the foggy path going forward, I feel that we're really benefiting from having had good financial direction over the last, you know, decades, really. San Mateo is in a much better position than actually quite a few of our neighbors. And I got this by reading a long article in the Chronicle this weekend. So some cities are facing really much steeper difficulties. I do favor also looking at all the revenue enhancement opportunities that are possibly feasible. And I think it's worth finding out at least what the possibilities are there. If we leave any revenue enhancement stuff on the table that we could have maybe got without trying, then I I would feel like, you know, we're taking and hurting, you know, our our citizens and maybe even our employees in other ways. So we need to explore all those opportunities. Okay, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick. Diane, you have one more thing. Go ahead.
I have one question. It is that we are talking about the $7.8 million deficit for the next fiscal year.
No, we're talking about closing an ongoing, an ongoing $7 million gap between revenues and expenditures.
Structural, yeah.
But it is that you had some money in addition to reserves. Do I have that right?
Yes, that's what we're drawing down on this year and next, and actually the next five.
So the only reason I'm asking is because I too would like to take up the billboard. But I recognize that for purposes of this fiscal year, we have some funds that we're going to be tapping into for the structural deficit. What we're talking about is going forward.
Yes.
I'm looking and I see no other questions or comments. I'd like to say one final thing, which is that Drew, I appreciate all of the thought that went into saving, saving jobs, saving staff's salaries and and trying to limit the pain for those who are providing for us right now. So I appreciate that very much. With that in mind, I'd like to make the motion that we follow your recommendation, all four parts of it, including that we will only furlough at at the end of the year, around the holidays, if TOT does not pass. Is that correct? That's your recommendation?
Yeah, my only, my only caveat to that would be what I'd like to talk to the bargaining units about is even if TOT does pass, to consider still doing the furlough and allowing folks to take vacation as opposed to going on to no pay. Because I think there's a great benefit potentially to employees to doing that is having a time off. It's a it's a relatively slow time at City Hall, and it does burn a liability, a financial liability off the books. So I would like to have that. It's it's a point of negotiation. So I'd like to check with the units on their interest in doing that.
Okay, so the way that you just said it, that is my, that is your recommendation. And I'm making the motion to to follow your recommendation. And separately, to give you as a council, to give you direction to to reconsider those revenue enhancements and when they make sense, bring them back to us as soon as possible. But I I recognize the the limits on staff time. That is, that is a separate direction from my motion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could just make one comment. Yes, we will. We will get to the the billboards as soon as we're able. With the 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 tiered transfer tax, one of the considerations as to why we didn't put that on the 2020 ballot was because split role has qualified. And there is a heavy concern about us really not not that not being good timing to do the the tiered transfer tax.
Fair enough. Thank you for that. There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
Pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Golds.
Yes.
Councilmember Benia.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Drew, thank you very much, as usual. That's all we have for this meeting. There's no other items on the agenda. I will note that next week is a regularly scheduled meeting. Next week is the meeting where we have Measure P on the ballot or Measure P on our agenda in order to place it on the ballot. As we mentioned last week, we formed a subcommittee. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez and I met as that subcommittee. I think we're, I think we'll put in writing our recommendation for the agenda on Thursday. How does that sound? I'm looking at Deputy Mayor Rodriguez. Does that sound? We'll just put it in writing and we'll add it to the agenda and it'll be a part of our recommendation for for next week. Sean, is there any issue with that? We can both have the place Measure P on the ballot and take a position on it.
That'd be fine.
All right. So those things will be on the agenda. And then we already sorry, we already during the last presentation that Drew gave, mentioned that we don't need to meet every week for a while. We can see how how it's going. And so we won't be meeting on the Tuesday after Labor Day. Memorial Day, excuse me. What month is this? What month is this?
I have no idea.
It's May. So big, huge shout out to two people. Number one, a happy birthday to our Commissioner Nicole Fernandez. Nicole Fernandez, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to our native son and Council Councilmember to the south, Charles Stone. Congratulations to Joan's mom, who is recovering and and we're thinking of her. She's in our prayers. Thank you, Joan's mom. And with that, I think that we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks. Good night.